Very good folks, thanks for your patience. We're going to get started a couple of minutes late. I want to welcome you to the Red Hook Town Board Meeting of Tuesday, April 9th, 2024. Would you be kind enough to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all very much. Moran, welcome. If you'd be kind enough to hand over to the screen for the folks at home so they can see what we'll be discussing tonight. We do have, as always, it's the first meeting of the month, so we'll review very quickly snapshot of the finances for the town with the supervisor's report and the clerk's report. We do have a few announcements to make, public comments if any. And then we'll dive right on in to road salt and brine alternatives presentation. Vicki Kelly is with us, thank you very much, from the Cary Institute and Dutchess County EMC. Bob Wyant, Highway Superintendent from the town of Rhinebeck, thank you very much for coming. And we also, next up, we'll have a resolution to set public hearings on moratorium waiver applications. We're going to take a look at and perhaps approve some engineering task orders as we advance the potential for the extension of sewer into our commercial district. We have a brief application to review from Camp Rising Sun. They're going to have their, I think, second annual run in the southern portion of our community. And then we have some correspondence. So with that being said, why don't we jump right into the supervisor's report? Again, this is a moment in time. This is for the period ending March 31st. We had an opening balance of $7,696,000 and change. We have proceeds of $5.5 million or so in dispersments. This is partly moving some of the money to New York class to obtain interest on our funds until we need to utilize that. Dispersments, $4.3 million. We end the period with a balance of just over $9 million. We have budget adjustments prepared for us by an online and various reports. Folks, I'm assuming you've had some time to take a look at that. Okay. Is there a motion to accept the supervisor's report? Thank you, Bill.
Second.
Thank you, Jacob. Molly, Saber, Christine.
Aye.
Julia.
Aye.
Myself. And then we have the town clerk's report. Deanna, would you be kind enough to read that, please?
The town clerk's report for the period of March 1st, 2024 to March 31st, 2024. Total local shares remitted to the supervisor, $5,133.57. Amount paid to New York State Agriculture and Markets for the spay neuter program, $26. Amount paid to New York State Department of Health for marriage licenses, $90. Amount paid to New York State Environmental Conservation for hunting and fishing licenses, $129.43. Total state, county, and local revenues, $5,379.
Very much. Also have some vouchers.
So I hereby certify that vouchers numbered 31718 to 31884, processed in the month of March 2024, are an accurate reporting of the abstracts approved for payment by the town board.
Good, thank you very much, Deanna. Is there a motion to accept the town clerk's report?
Second.
Saber, Julia.
Aye.
William.
Aye.
Myself, thank you. After a trifecta of very popular events this last weekend, we had E-Ways. Thanks very much to Theresa Burke and the Highway Department staff for all their work associated with that. We also had our Repair Cafe at the Community Center. Both of those events took place on Saturday. On Sunday, we had the Free Gravies, or as we like to say, Free Vaccination Clinic here at Town Hall. Again, this is the second year that we've done that consecutive year. And how did it go, Bill?
It was, uh, it was busy. In fact, they ran out of vaccine and had to go get more.
Okay.
There were a lot of walk-ins.
Okay.
But I think last year was like '93, and I think they had brought enough to replicate that, and they didn't have enough. So I think maybe like 110, 115.
Okay.
They're going to send us the final tally, but it was very popular.
Yeah, well, a good service that we can offer, all of those events. You know, we're all about reducing, reusing, recycling, and certainly what we can to eliminate some of the costs associated with living here in the Hudson Valley. So continuing with events, we have coming up on Saturday, we have now our third drive electric vehicle demonstration. We're happy to report the weather forecast looks better than the last two times we had it. One was the last time, it was 100 degrees here in Red Hook back in 2019. And then the last demonstration was in the fall when it poured rain throughout it. So we have a nice lineup of electric vehicles and folks who are willing to give test drives. So if you are interested, it's right here at Red Hook Town Hall, 1 to 4 on Saturday. Following weekend, we have cleanup day on Sunday, April 21st. This is now the 16th, maybe 16th cleanup day. Since 2009, we've been doing this annual roadside cleanup. Arbor Day continues May 4th. And then in the Village, we have the Rotary's Apple Blossom Day, which is Saturday, May 11. There are flyers. Everyone should have received a letter from my office with the list of events and updates on some of the initiatives we're working on. But if you have not, please go to our website. And as we try to remind you each and every time, sign up for notification. You'll have all of this information sent to you whenever it comes out. Cleanup Day, there's the information there. Okay. Let's, uh, do we have public comments before we get started on the agenda? Is there anybody here who'd like to make some public comments? Hearing none. Vicki, what I'm going to do is I'm going to try to switch over here. Hopefully we'll get your latest and greatest. Or not? Let's try preview. Will that do if I make it a little bigger? I think we can see that.
It'll be fine. Can I ask you to switch slides?
Oh, yes, of course. Yeah, it's one of the few channels I have. Thank you.
So thank you, everybody, for letting me talk about this important issue, an issue I think is very important. I'm joined by my colleague on EMC, John Pereskeva, and also Bob Wyant, who's going to talk specifics about brining. What I was asked to talk about are the impacts of road salt, the effects of road salt and the impacts. And so that's what I'm going to do. Hopefully, I will set the stage for Bob to talk about implementing reduction practices. Okay, so, next, there you go. We started using road salt in the United States. Well, we started recording the use of it in 1940. The USGS recorded 150,000 metric tons of salt used in 1940. There's some evidence that we used it before that, but that was when record keeping started. Next. We've known since the late 1960s, early 1970s that the road salt that we put on our roads, it accumulates in groundwater and other freshwater systems. This is from a paper that was published in 1972 in which they looked at groundwater in a suburb of Boston and discovered that it was contaminated by road salt. Next. A lot of people ask me, well, can't there be natural salt in groundwater? Aren't there sources of salt in the ground that could infect groundwater? And this is a paper, there's a handful of papers out there that predate when we started using road salt. And this is one from the state of New Hampshire, where they sampled the groundwater throughout the state between 1918 and 1924. And the concentrations are less than 10 milligrams per liter, which is background concentration. So this is part of the evidence that we have that the background concentrations of salt are pretty low. Next. This is from a paper that was published in 2013. And it's from the state of Connecticut, the Department of Health there. The state Department of Health samples groundwater throughout the state. So if you zoom out a little bit, this, I think, is from 1894. I was looking for that number.
Yeah.
So that's what the groundwater concentrations of chloride. Now, so the road salt is the same thing as table salt, it's sodium chloride. And very often, we just report the chloride half of the molecule. So this is what the chloride concentration, and thus the salt concentration, looked like in Connecticut in 1894. And I'm going to show you a series of maps of Connecticut going through the years. So the next one should be, go ahead, Beyonce. 1902, looks about the same. Whoa, go back. You went too far. So 1902, and then the next one, if you go up one, there's 1920 to 1938. And this is one of the pieces of evidence that we have that road salt was actually used before 1940. It's just that we started recording the use of it in 1940. And you can see that the groundwater in the state of Connecticut is starting to increase. One more slide.
Should be able to use your keys, like the down key.
There you go. So there's 1977 and 1978. You're just going to see that the concentrations continue to increase. You could just scroll through. 1992 to 2005. And the next one is the last one from Connecticut. And that's the concentration of salt in the groundwater in Connecticut between 2002 and 2007. So we know that the salt that we put on our roads is ending up in the groundwater, at least in Connecticut. Next slide. So this is from a study that we did at the Cary Institute in which we used the drinking water, well water data from the town of East Fishkill to study the distribution of salt around the town. There were about 1,000 data points that we used. Next slide. And we did an analysis to try to figure out why the road salt is distributed in the groundwater the way it is. And one of the first things we did was we looked at the difference between major roads and minor roads. So wells that were next to minor roads had lower concentrations than wells that were next to major roads. Now, in science, some of this is cut off. But in science, we have to look for statistical significance. And there was so much variability in the data, we didn't get statistical significance. But there's clearly, and other studies have definitely found that wells close to major roads have higher concentrations of salt and wells next to minor roads. Okay, next. Oh, this didn't come out very well. So the one thing that we know that that did come out statistically significant is that the distance to the nearest road from the well and the amount of pavement in the area surrounding the well makes a difference. So wells that are closer to roads had higher concentrations than wells that were farther away. And wells that had a lot of pavement around them had higher concentrations than wells that were not surrounded by as much pavement. What we did find was that there are hot spots and cold spots. So there are concentrated spots where there's a lot of low concentration, wells with low concentrations of salt. And then the pink spots are areas where there's clusters of homes that had wells with high concentrations of salt. So clusters of low concentrations and clusters of high concentrations. So this is another study that provides evidence that there's water, that there's salt in our drinking, in our groundwater, deep groundwater where we access drinking water. So that you don't think that all the salt ends up in groundwater. This is data from the Wapanger Creek, as it runs through the Cary Institute of Ecosystem Studies property. And it shows that, you can see that the salt has been increasing. We started collecting data in 1985, and the salt slowly increased over time. And that sort of has leveled off, but there's a lot of variability from year to year. The one thing I want to point out about this is it took a long time for that salt to accumulate enough in the groundwater to cause these increases. That same amount of time is going to be required to cause decreases because there's so much salt built up in the groundwater and other subsurface systems. It's going to take a long time to flush out. So even if we start reducing the amount of salt now, we won't see the impact of that in groundwater and stream water and lakes and ponds for a number of years. We call this a legacy of that. Next. One of the things that scientists are quite concerned about is the connection between lead and road salt. We know that road salt is corrosive. We know that there's lead in drinking water pipes. The solder that we use to solder joints in our plumbing had lead in it until 1986. It was only banned in 1986. So any houses that were built before 1986 have some lead in their pipes. I don't think we use lead pipes. We definitely don't use lead pipes anymore in new building. There might be some in some old building. When I was playing Clue one time with my kids, I stopped at the game and they said, "What is a lead pipe?" They had no idea what lead pipes were. But we know that, so we know that salt is corrosive. And what happens is when it runs through, when salty water goes past those joints that have lead in the solder or a lead pipe, it causes that lead to go into solution and thus into the water that people are drinking. But when we go and we do a geographic analysis, like in East Fishkill or other places, and look for places that have high salt, they don't necessarily also have high lead and vice versa. So the way the lead is distributed in groundwater is not necessarily directly connected to where the salt is distributed. So scientists are still working on this question, trying to get to the bottom line of why is lead where it is and how is it associated with road salt. There are a lot of things that we can do to reduce the amount of salt that we use. We call them best management practices. I have put up here some reports that we produced. You all got this in your packet. And in it, it describes the effects of salt, where it comes from, how it moves through our systems. And then there's a whole section on best management practices. And then in addition to that, there's a whole section on how to overcome the impediments to implementing those best management practices. So I encourage you to take a copy of this report and distribute it however you want. Okay, next slide. In terms of best management practices, to me, the low hanging fruit is salt storage facilities. These are pictures from around our area. Oh, that one's pretty bad. And so, and so one of the very first things to do is to make sure salt storage facilities store the salt securely and away from the elements. These open-faced sheds in Quonset Hut kind of situations are not good because when it rains, it could just dissolve all that salt, you know, that face of that salt, and then you have it in the water system. Next slide. I won't talk about all the best management practices, except that there are some. We're going to talk, Bob is going to talk about his brining operation in Rhinebeck. So I just wanted to show you this so that you know there's a lot of different things that can be done. And this one's going to get cut off. Next slide. Okay. So one of the things that the Dutchess County Environmental Management Council did in 2022 was we asked Bob, how much did it cost to build your brining system? And how much salt did you save? There's a lot of information out there. There's an organization called Clear Roads. And they have estimates of how much salt savings there are from how much salt savings you can see from using a brining operation. Conservative estimate is 30%. So when we applied that to the cost of building a brine system, the salt savings that you would see, we estimated that the amount of time that it would take to pay off a brining, you know, the purchase of a brining system or the purchase of the material to build a brining system is between four months and close to a year. So it doesn't take that much to pay off what that upfront cost because you have so much in salt savings. Next. So the takeaways, there is road salt in our water. We're all drinking road salt. It's in our groundwater, it's in our lakes and ponds and rivers and streams. There's a legacy effect. Like most pollutants, once you put them out there, they don't just disappear when you stop putting them out there. They stay there for a long time. So it's going to take a long time, probably a decade, before all of that salt that's already in the groundwater to flush out. We're worried about the connection with lead. We know there's lead out there, and we know that salt is corrosive. And so we're a bit concerned about it, but it's a really complicated issue. And then lastly, it is possible to balance environmental stewardship with safety and fiscal responsibility by implementing best management practices. So that's, I think my last slide is my, there's my email address. I'm happy to answer questions now or take emails from anybody who wants to email me. Are there any questions? Thank you.
Very nice. Thank you very much. Well, I'll save my question for after Blauco.
I have one question that maybe is, you sort of go now before we switch the slides. Could you, I know you don't want to go into depth about the different best management practices, but can you give us like 30 seconds on what some of those are in addition to the brining and the proper salt storage?
Yeah, that's probably a better question for Bob, but I can say there's live edge plows. So those are, you know, old fashioned plows are just a straight piece of whatever metal or...
Piece of metal.
And a live edge plow has a bunch of different pieces. So it'll conform to the surface of the road better and remove the snow. The whole idea is removing snow. You got to get that snow off of there. There are road weather information systems. So that's a system that has like sensors that are all over the place so that the drivers can actually look and see what the conditions are instead of guessing what the conditions are out there. They have areas of roads that they need to treat so they can look at their specific... And you can put those road weather information systems in the trouble spots. What else? I'll leave these for everybody to...
There are, hello, everybody. I'm Bob Wyant, Town Rhinebeck Highway Superintendent. I've been using brine for about four years now. Okay, it's, first of all, it's not a magic bullet. It's not going to solve everything. There's times when you can use it, times when you don't use it. If it's going to rain out before it snows, you don't use it. Okay? I've been trying different ways of applying it. 45 gallons per lane mile, 35 gallons per lane mile. It all depends on the temperature, the moisture of the snow. One of the main things that I like about brine is that it can be put down a day ahead of time of a storm. I can send one truck out, takes about six hours. It takes about a little over 5,000 gallons of brine to treat all my roads. If it starts snowing at 2:00 in the morning, my roads are already treated. And all you're doing is preventing snow freezing to the road. Not going to melt all the snow off.
How many miles a road? Do you have a Rhinebeck?
We have 57 miles of center lane miles. It'd be 114 miles of lanes. So the thing with brine, if I treated all my roads to conventional method, about 350 pounds of salt per lane mile, it would take about 19 ton of salt. Okay? If I treated with brine, it takes about 5 ton of salt. It takes 2.2 pounds of salt per gallon of water to make the brine at 23.3%. That will bring the freezing point down to about 6 degrees. If I bring the salt up to 26%, the freezing point's at 32. So there's that little 3 degrees of difference that makes a big difference. We made our own brine maker. When I got into this, I started checking out commercial brine makers and stuff. And low end was $30,000, high end, you know, $80,000, $90,000. Seen a thing on YouTube, a brine maker, and I liked the idea of it. Talked to my crew. I said, "Do you guys think we could build this?" And they actually got behind it and enjoyed building it. And we made a few improvements to the one that was on YouTube. And we make about 800 gallons of brine about 20, 25 minutes. And we've been using it for four years now. The initial cost was 13,500 dollars. That was just for the supplies. And I have a, that included a 5,000 gallon storage tank. So it runs on two gasoline pumps. So I didn't want to spend money on putting up electrical panels and all that, you know, big bucks. So I went with the gasoline pumps, the ones that were on YouTube. They were about $600 a pump. So we replaced one pump so far in four years and some fittings here and there. But most of the parts that I need for it, I can get at the local hardware store, which makes it nice. Last year, I bought an applicator. We had a homemade applicator of a 1,000 gallon tank we had. It was kind of hard to figure out how many gallons I was putting down and stuff. I had to make sure the truck did 25 miles an hour. And educating the crew on using this is a big part of it, too. They got to be behind it. If they're not behind it, it makes it very difficult. But now I have an applicator with a GPS on it. I have GPS on all my trucks, so I know where they are. I know how fast they're going. So it's working out pretty good. Okay? And she mentioned the live edge plows. I bought two, two years ago, live edge plows. There's 12 segments on a plow blade. They move independently of each other. Okay? They clear off more snow. They're a lot quieter. They're not cheap. About $3,000 of plow to set it up initially. This year, I tried a different brand of it to see which one works best. I haven't made a decision on that yet. Guys like them. They said they're quiet. They seem to clean more snow off is what we want to do. We do use magnesium once in a while. I tried it this year. Supposed to put 20% in with brine mix. Funny story is, is that you put the magnesium in after you put the brine in. Don't put it in first because it makes foam. I had foam all over the place. My guys kept running out, "Wow, we got foam all over." So learned my lesson there. So like I said, I'm still experimenting with it. I would like to try using it during a storm. I would like to try using it during a storm. You know, it, it just saves a lot of money and labor and it's a good insurance policy. I have all my roads covered with brine. If it starts snowing two o'clock in the morning, it usually takes about an hour before you get trucks hitting a pavement. An hour is, you know, it takes ten times as much salt to go down from the top as it does from the bottom up. So.
Interesting.
But that's about it.
Quick question. The commercial applicator that you purchased.
Yes.
How much did that cost?
Eighteen thousand dollars. And it's available on Sourcewell, Sourcewell bid. The company I bought it from, I wouldn't give you the name, but if you're interested, the support they gave us is unbelievable.
That's right.
And the older gentleman, he knows brine inside and out. It's, it's a good thing. Like I said, I wish I could use it more, but if it's going to rain, I can't use it. It's just a waste. I mean, sometimes I look foolish because if I go out and brine and it doesn't snow, everybody, you know, but a lot of people do like it. A lot of the residents like it when they see the stripes on the road and so. Like to try different things, see what works.
Very good.
Any other questions?
I think this was kind of implied in the cost benefit analysis, but have you seen your annual road salt purchase costs go down because of the brining?
This winter's been very easy winter. We probably saved probably a hundred ton of salt this year. Like using the brine.
Yeah. Not, nothing as they used to say. I'm wondering, not this winter, but the previous winter, correct me if I'm wrong. Teresa, we have a fair amount of ice, but not so much snow. So I'd imagine this would be good in those situations, right? Where you pre-treat and then you get the ice on top of it?
Yeah, ice I hate.
Well, we all do. We all do.
Very, very tough to deal with. We, we run road chains on all of our trucks. And that works very well. But ice is tough to deal with. And yeah, if you can stop that layer from freezing to the road, it's a big help. And the thing about brine too is when you spray the road, it stays on the road. When, when you've got a spinner going, thirty percent of the salt goes off the road. And the salt only works when it's wet. So, you know, so that's my spiel.
Good spiel.
Have you been using the brine for how long, did you say?
About four years now. Yeah, I wish I could use it more, but the weather doesn't cooperate.
Right.
You have one truck that's outfitted?
I have one truck with a thousand gallon tank on it. Takes approximately six hours. So there's a big savings in labor too.
Yeah, the overtime and not getting out.
I even have to send out seven trucks to do what one truck can do in six hours. Plus the, the labor, especially when you get into overtime and stuff like that.
Right. But I mean, it's, you know, environmentally, it seems like a no-brainer and also just adding a tool to the toolkit so that you, you two as highway superintendents would have the opportunity to make the decision what's, what's the best way to.
Yeah, I constantly watch the weather and I take road temperatures. So I, I know what the road temperatures are because like I was talking earlier, difference in elevation, just a little bit makes a big difference sometimes.
Yeah, yeah. Interesting, very interesting. John, you're, you're, you're looking like you want to say something.
Would you like to explain to the supervisor what's on, so I'm not out to your system?
There are pictures of this brine system.
Yeah, this is pictures of my system here. This is what I started with as a distribution.
Okay.
Okay, this is an old water tank that we had.
Yeah.
That's my brine making machine.
Okay.
So that'll make eight hundred gallons of brine in twenty minutes.
Wow.
Here's another picture of it. Boy, John, you took a lot of pictures.
I didn't know what it was about, that's very important.
Did you take a picture of the applicator?
That might be after I show you.
Oh, okay.
You guys can have those pictures if you like.
There's a picture of the pumps. There's like six hundred dollar pumps, they're economical. That's our storage tank. And, oh, this goes with the applicator. It's all computerized. I can tell the guy to put down thirty-five gallons per lane mile, he just punches it in and then we'll put it in.
They can have that if they want.
And that was included with the eighteen thousand dollar tank.
The computer was?
Yes.
So the truck that you retrofitted.
Yes.
For this was a regular plow truck, a pickup truck, I mean.
Yeah, it slides into the back of a dump body.
Dump body, okay.
Yeah. And that also has a gasoline pump on it. You can get a hydraulic driven pump for it, but I'm always trying to think ahead. If the truck breaks down and I don't, can't use the brine, this way here, I can slide it out and put it into another truck.
Do you leave that truck outfitted with the, the brine tank all year long or do you give it as a multipurpose truck at other seasons?
I usually rent a truck during the winter, a dump truck, just for three months that I like to leave it in. But I can also pull it out fairly quickly. It's got legs on it, it's, it works pretty well. And just fold the legs down, put the dump body up, pull it out.
And the applicator has adjustable width?
The one I, the one I bought, you can do, you could buy an applicator that will do three lanes or two lanes. Mine just does one lane.
One lane, okay.
Okay, because I, I don't know about the two or three lane thing. I mean, maybe if you're out in the middle of the night, you could do it, but you don't want to splash somebody's car with brine when you go by it.
Right, very, very, okay. So you're going back and forth on a, on a roadway?
Yes. We try to set it right so we're not backtracking so much.
Okay.
But like I said, get the crew on board with it and train them on it. That's very, very important. A lot of, I find a lot of highway departments don't really believe in the brine too much. Change, change in highway departments is hard.
Yeah, I was going to ask you about that because, you know, if, if you felt that, you know, there was sort of a wave of change coming, then the equipment might get expensive very fast as everybody wants it. But you don't really think there's a lot of demand yet for it?
No, I, I think it's going to be a slow change, you know, and numbers, numbers don't lie when you add up the savings and, and stuff like that. And then the thing for the environment is a plus.
Yeah, it's a bit of a catch twenty-two in a, in a world of, you know, evolving climate. We're seeing less and less snow perhaps. I mean, this year was El Niño, so that may have exacerbated the situation.
I kind of think that our climate has switched. I never get Seattle weather, they're getting our weather. We're getting more rain than, than we ever had.
We had an interesting study done back in twenty seventeen, Bob, including some folks from NASA here, and they told us to expect very rainy December. We would have the same amount of precipitation year round, but it would come in sudden bursts and, you know, snowfall numbers would go down precipitously. And that was a new generation. And of course, you know, we're sort of ahead of schedule. We'll see what picks year and the next couple of years bring. None of us have a crystal ball, but certainly here we are at, it was seventy-four degrees today, wasn't it?
Yeah, I mean, I've been with the highway department over thirty years and I remember snowbanks.
Right.
Right.
Do we know? Yeah, how many towns in Duchess County are, are moving in this direction?
Towards brine?
Yeah. Well, you have an associate, is there like an association?
I think I, I think I, I may be the only one, I don't know.
How long has the state been doing it?
The state, state has substations, so, so, and they're somewhat independent. So some of them do it and some of them don't. Some of them did it for a year, for, you know, ten years and then stopped. I don't really know why, but.
Yeah, I, I asked this year, I said, how come you guys don't spray it anymore? And he said, well, we have crews on twenty-four hours now, we go on twelve hour shifts. So he said, we're out there on the road already, which I don't, it doesn't make a lot of sense to me.
That doesn't seem like a very, that's a cool answer, but.
But that's what they told me. And now the, now the state went, instead of spraying the road, they're spraying the salt coming out of the truck, what they call pre-wetting it. Under the assumption that's going to work quicker. Been around for a while and I, I don't know if you could spray the salt down that, that quickly with water to make it work very well. But they claim it does. I had, had to see it work.
And so just to be clear, brine is not a complete substitution for salting?
No.
Right.
No, it, it, it depends on the weather, temperature, all that. They are looking at things called winter pave. Winter pave is an asphalt that has calcium chloride mixed in it. Well, it's being made. Okay, Cargill was pushing this a couple of years ago. I couldn't figure out why Cargill was pushing something that would reduce salt because they sell a lot of salt. And they had it over in Europe years ago, but the moisture brings the calcium chloride to the top and it made the road slippery when it rained out. But they said that they modified it, fixed that, and I was going to try an experimental piece of it. It's one hundred pounds of this winter pave mix to each ton of asphalt. So I said, I'll, I'll buy a ton, I'll do twenty, twenty ton paving someplace and we'll use it as an experiment. But they said, no, you gotta buy two hundred ton. I said, I don't have that.
There is a community in Lake George called The Hague and they implemented brining as well as three or four other best management practices and they have reduced their salt use and they continue to do it by seventy percent. They really, really care a lot about Lake George.
They do.
Continue to put that salt, so it is possible to do.
I met that guy up there when I was at the school from Lake George and he talked to me for an hour about brine, you know.
And there are some communities in the Midwest that use it exclusively. So it is possible. There's an organization called Clear Roads, that org. And that is an organization that is like the clearinghouse for all the different ways to, to improve efficiency with how salt is.
Would you, would you take some questions from the audience tonight? Would that be fine? Okay, we have you here. Anybody have questions?
Any questions?
Lori?
It's just a statement.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you for doing it and for telling us more. And I just want to share that Bard has been doing it for the last two winters. So our director of buildings and grounds, Mike Emmerich, wanted to be here tonight, but he's too far away. So he's offered up himself for conversation.
He's a former highway superintendent as well.
Yeah, yeah, a little farther north.
Yeah, do you know, he used it before Bard? Because I know that that's like, he's been the director, it's like that time. So do you know if he used it previously or is it like a new thing at Bard?
He did it in the town that he was the superintendent.
He did that too.
Yes, yes. And that was the reason he really wanted to do it here, he knew it worked.
Was he a local superintendent?
I forgot the name of his town.
I figured out.
It's a small town.
I don't think it was local.
It was local, yeah.
Yeah, it was not local.
The EMC surveyed all the town highway superintendents.
Not Duchess, yeah.
And Bob was the only, only person.
Who, who was using it?
Who was using it, yeah.
John, did you want to say something?
Oh yeah, I want to say a lot.
Okay, please.
I've been practicing for a month and a half.
Oh, that's very good. Did you clear your throat and be on key?
Think you can have the total floor? No.
Right.
Anyway, I want to stand up or sit down.
If you could stand up, that'd be great, John. This way the, the camera and the mic can capture what you have to say. There's a mic there if you'd like to use it. If not, hopefully we'll be able to hear you.
Well, we'll see.
Okay.
Maybe I'll talk loud.
Okay.
Obviously, as Bob said and Vicki said, it's not a foolproof solution to a problem, but it could very well save some money and maybe make life a lot better for the public. I never intended to be an environmentalist, but here I am. I've been in the excavating business for, you know, sixty years. And I worked for the town of East Fishkill Highway Department on and off as a contractor and actually employee for several years. And I actually spread the salt. And yeah, I know, I spread the salt too. And I see exactly what Bob pointed out. You put the salt down, it bounces all over the place and ends up on a curb. And where's it go from there? Into the drainage system, into the pond, into the lake and the creek. My time with East Fishkill as an employee, I was the MS four officer. You're familiar with MS four? I was the first stormwater officer in East Fishkill. And I had to go out and make sure all the, the systems were working properly, cleaned out. I'm also in the watershed, New York City watershed. That's another issue that you're dealing with, New York City. It's, that's important, very important actually. The degree you are in New York City is unbelievable to this point. Anyway, you, you see piles of dirt around construction sites and silt fencing around it and then they, after fourteen days, you're supposed to turn it green. You know, hydroseated, mulch and seed, whatever, has to happen. You don't want that sediment from that pile of dirt ending up into a drain or into your drainage system. And it was interesting for five years that I did that job, it was quite interesting going around the town and so on. And since I left it, I look at different things, I'm saying, oh my God, you don't do your right thing. It's just, like Vicki and Bob put out there, it's, it's something in the future we need to think about. I know East Fishkill is thinking about it. I mean, they're, they're talking about maybe a trailer mounted tank. So they can hook it behind a truck, the standard can still be on a truck, they can hook it behind a truck, tow it around, do the area. Now, probably unlike Bob, we have a lot of hills in East Fishkill. I live on Stormwater Mountain. Had three inches of snow last week.
Yeah.
Nothing in a valley, three inches of snow. So if they can do a trailer mount and, and saved that at, at, that at part of it, not using a truck, it would make a lot, lot more sense. I also had a chance to talk to the Commissioner of Public Works in Putnam County. And I got pictures of their system. They purchased a brine making system and a tank and everything. And it was thirty-five thousand dollars to buy it from the vendor.
Okay.
And they outfitted their trucks with the solution, um, equipment to spread the brine before storms and the trucks were also able to go out and plow the roads and take care of the roads afterwards. One truck does look good. It, it's just the future. You know, if we elected officials and environmental people don't look to the future, our kids are going to inherit a mess. Our grandkids really in a mess.
Yeah.
So it's very important. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, John, very much. Very timely, we've been focusing.
There's a question on the back.
Oh, may I?
Bob, do you sell, do you sell your brine to the village?
The village of Brinebeck has twenty-one cents a gallon.
I, as, as the village of Red Hook, we purchase, we purchase salt and, and the salt mix from the town. So as you consider, keep us in mind.
Yeah.
You know, if you, if you want me to come up and spray or something sometime and say you can see how it works, you can do that too.
Terrific. Well, this is very timely. We've been focusing on a lot of water lately, including potential creation of, the extension of a sewer district to protect our aquifer. We've been focusing on the new wetlands regulations and the rules that are coming out from DEC. We've been focusing on flooding, stormwater. All of these issues intersect and they're all about water quality and protecting. We really appreciate the work that you all are doing to help educate us. Obviously, our highway superintendent deputy and then crew will, you know, take into consideration your, your input and, you know, I, I can't speak for the board, but I would just say that I'd be more than willing to find the money in the budget to try to accomplish this if, if it seems workable within our department. Yeah, it's important stuff. John?
I don't think it's said yet, but thank you to you and the town board for running us here tonight to explain what county knows very well and Bob actually practicing. It's very important to our future and thank. It's very important to our future, and thank you very much for the opportunity to speak to you folks and show what we've learned.
We're very happy to have you. Trying to get you for a while, get the dates all right, and so it's really terrific. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for coming.
Thanks for all of your work, Bob, to try and figure it all out and learn about, and hope we can learn from your experiences as well.
Yeah, I work well with Teresa.
That's great, and invite the folks over. We are here in April, so, you know, that does leave us some time if we wanna do it for, you know, before next season, so just, you know, report back to us what.
Yeah, I asked Teresa if she had a good supply of water, if she needed that, and she said yes.
Water, we have lots of here. Yes. Very good. Okay, well, thank you all very much. Safe travels back. Glad you're here today when it was sunny, because there's more water coming for the next three days. And again, thanks for all your very work.
Oh, one interesting little fact, Vicki.
Yep.
Salt shows up in the strains, but July, August?
Yeah, the average concentrations are actually higher in the summertime. We don't know about what happens in well water, but the average concentrations are higher in streams and lakes and ponds in the summertime because there's less fresh water input.
Okay.
Yeah.
You'll see spikes in the wintertime. The average is higher.
Interesting. All right, well, thank you, and thank you, Teresa and John.
Thank you for having me here.
For your consideration.
Thank you.
Yeah?
I'll leave this.
Figure you.
Thank you, yes. Thank you, Vicki, and everybody who signed up for notifications got a digital copy of that report, so that's helpful. Okay. Good news, right? It's nice to have good news like that up there. Stuff's we can take. I'm gonna scroll through this entire report. Folks, if you're interested, it was in the packet that was sent out. If you signed up for notifications, you would have received this report from the Cary Institute. Okay, next up, we have moratorium waiver applications. We had five of them that I think came in timely. We received one, I think, just a couple of hours ago. Folks, so here's what we've got. We've got an application on Bud's Corners Road, a single-family house. Already approved subdivision from fifteen years ago. We've got, you remember, right? It's great having you here, Christine, because you're memory bank. We also have one that just came in right, I think literally the day before, from Bob Ross and Red Hook Land Corp. And, you know, that one's an interesting one. I think Bob's under the impression that he can just utilize the existing, or at least he indicated to me, the existing subsurface system. But of course, Dutchess County mandates a new system that may be put in place on that. Old Brinebeck Aerodrome, you have information there. Basically, they're replacing a walkway, kind of an interesting design. I don't know if you saw the images there of a covered bridge. That's through the federal wetland with Culvert. I think we'll wanna get some input from our planner perhaps on that one, but doesn't look like a major disturbance in the federal wetland. We have an application from New Singular PCS LLC. As you know, they've been in front of, I think, the planning board and perhaps even the zoning board. There are cell towers there just north of the bridge approach, budding or almost a budding forest park. That application, I think there are no DEC wetlands from what we see, but there are federal wetlands in the driveway that need to go in there. Through that, and the Monopole Tower, I think the base might actually be in some federal wetlands there. We might wanna get something put on that as well from the planner, but the planner has been involved with that project for for quite some time. The last one, so, oh, Tradition. So we have six separate applications from Tradition, which is a project that's fully underway and has been for many years. In fact, somewhere in the neighborhood of over a dozen years from start to finish. And some of those lots are within the three hundred feet of DEC wetland. And, you know, obviously, the development was approved many years ago, and those lots were part of that approval. I will say on this application that there are not individual septic, so that issue is not relevant to these particular lots that are seeking the waiver. And there's a layout for you all to see which lots those are. So I think, you know, maybe a little more information we might need before a public hearing, but I, I'm comfortable, I'm comfortable with setting a date for these five for the next meeting, so we could try to expedite. I think we have enough information that we can expedite. I'd also like to make a recommendation, because we will be getting these sort of in groups that will consolidate the public hearing notice, and we just reference the ones each time that we set for a public hearing. It'll make it a lot easier administratively.
And then, Robert, do you anticipate that one, like the one that came in too late to include today, and any that come in between now and the next meeting, would just go into a subsequent batch at a public meeting?
Yeah, I think we'll have to do in batches and make sure that, you know, they've been reviewed. The one that came in today was not reviewed by our zoning officer, so we won't have a recommendation on them.
Is that important? Because there were others that came in that were determined not to be required.
Yeah, folks, we would encourage you to take a look at the moratorium law. I think there were initially, and certainly folks' misunderstanding. It does not impact projects where construction or disturbance is happening within three hundred feet of the federal wetlands. It's just when it's occurring within the federal wetland. So some folks didn't read it correctly, so we would encourage you to do so. And if you have any questions, of course, please feel free to give our building and zoning department a call or call my office, and we'd be happy to assist you through the process. Okay. So we do have various resolutions. We can take the resolutions individually, but let's do a, afterwards, we'll do a combined motion to set the public hearing. This would be, we have two other public hearings at our next meeting, so let's choose seven fifty-five in our next resolution, Deanna, number one.
Fourteen.
Fourteen, thank you. I think we have, first up, we have the application for the wood property on Bud's Corners Road, and it's been determined that it is subject to the moratorium. And so therefore, we would like to set the public hearing for determination. This would be on the twenty-fourth of April, that's seven fifty-five. And I'd like to make that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Jacob Testa?
Aye.
Christine Kane?
Aye.
Julia Solomon?
Aye.
Okay. And again, here are the notices, and Deanna will take a motion to combine them. We have, there's the application. Next up would be resolution number fifteen, application by Red Hook Land Corp LLC. I think this may be one where we're gonna want some more information as part of the package. But let's set the public hearing. We could always extend it. This is resolution number fifteen, dated April ninth. Red Hook Land Corp set the public hearing for seven fifty-five. We'll have concurrent public hearings April twenty-fourth, and I said move. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Christine. All in favor? Julia Solomon?
Aye.
Bill Hamon?
Aye.
Jacob Testa?
Aye.
All right. Okay, Old Brinebeck Aerodrome for a waiver. This would be resolution number sixteen, to set for seven fifty-five on the twenty-fourth. And I said move. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Christine. All in favor? Jacob Testa?
Aye.
Julia Solomon?
Aye.
Bill Hamon?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Next up, we have New Singular PCS LLC for a waiver. This is resolution number seventeen, to set the public hearing concurrently at seven fifty-five. What's that?
It wasn't, I thought the range of the big aerodrome was seventeen.
Are we seventeen now, too?
Yeah, this is seventeen.
What's that?
Um, the aerodrome was sixteen, this is seventeen.
Seventeen.
Sixteen.
Seventeen. Concurrently, seven fifty-five, and I said move. Is there a second? Thank you. Thank you, Bill. All in favor? Julia Solomon?
Aye.
Aye.
Christine Kane?
Aye.
Jacob Testa?
Aye.
So this is we're missing a lot of information, though.
On the AT&T one?
Yeah, they're letting me out here.
I think you have an owner's consent form on that. I don't know if that was, yeah. I think we got an owner's consent form on that. I don't know if it was put in the package. We'll make sure that it is. All right, we've got a resolution number eighteen, which is Twenty-Five Old Farm Road Development LLC for a waiver, concurrent at seven fifty-five, April twenty-fourth. And I said move. This is for six lots. The parcels are detailed here. This is for the project that's nearly complete. An old farm road, referred to as Tradition. I think I moved it. Is there a second? Have you moved it? Okay.
The second is.
Oh, you said, okay, thank you. All in favor? Julia Solomon?
Aye.
Bill Hamon?
Aye.
Jacob Testa?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Okay, folks, if you are submitting an application or anything for a meeting, know that United State Open Meetings Law says that we must put it up for reviewing the day beforehand. So please, if you would be kind enough, just submit it the day before our meeting. That's true of all boards in our community, that all the documents must be available and on the town's website the day before. Okay, moving right along. Next, we have task orders. So as you know, we are progressing with, to endeavor to protect our aquifer. We've already reported to you, not necessarily that that got a lot of coverage, but reported to you that we've had failures within this corridor, septic failures. One of the greatest resources we have here in the town of Red Hook is a very large aquifer and some wonderful soils. Unfortunately, those soils are very permeable, and so what occurs underground or above ground, as we heard earlier tonight, makes its way down into that aquifer. And so we continue to move forward. If you were with us at our last meeting, we approved a resolution to ask our congressional representatives, our U.S. senator, for an appropriation towards this project. It's been recommended, and we'll get a final, final, perhaps at our next meeting. It's been recommended that we explore, working with the village of Red Hook, have a combined expansion of the plant there and have one system, of course, that would provide greater efficiency as well. And so we are now taking the next step, which is approving some task orders, or considering them, I should say, that would further help us understand what the potential cost would be and some more detail on that engineering. So the tasks include finalizing that preliminary engineering report. If you were here at the last meeting, you saw that. Prepare the map plan and report. This is a requirement before establishing a sewer district. And then, obviously, you have to do the environmental and the RPL to full review. And we also will have support for funding and grants from our community or certainly to issue all those services available. And here is what our engineers have estimated for those services. Map plan and report is about ten and a half thousand. District formation, technical support, legal. You know, we'll be looking at things like individual properties and easements and so on and so forth. The environmental review is somewhat substantial. You're talking about fifty-one properties in total and archaeological. Funding and grant application support, that's not a large amount. We have some of that in-house, but obviously, the technical and engineering stuff is something we're not qualified to do completely on our own. Total expense estimated to be somewhere in the neighborhood of sixty-four thousand eight hundred dollars. And are there any questions?
I had a question in the narrative. They called out, some of, you can leave the budget with the line editors there. Some of those they called out as being variable or not knowledgeable with a lot of certainty at this point, like legal services. How will the process be if they are, you know, nearing these amounts, or, you know, when do we get notification on how it's going?
They update us with the task orders where they stand, you know, once they do the billing, whether they think they're going to go over. As you know, there are a couple of different methods to form the district, and so that will impact what that actual number is. But yeah, we'll make sure that, we'll ask and make sure that they're early with any indications in case we need to increase the budget or something. And we'll have to appropriate that, I'm thinking that, you know, this would be a good opportunity to maybe take a look at utilizing some of the ARCA monies, because this is something we can use for ARCA. So we told the people in the district that we feel strongly enough about this project that we're willing to consider appropriating some of those monies. We good with that?
Yeah.
So, that being said, I would like to, where are we with our resolution? There we go.
Nineteen.
Nineteen. I would like to move resolution number nineteen, dated April ninth, approving the task orders for time bond for engineering services regarding the proposed sewer district. And it's a not-to-exceed order. And, uh, the, it's a not to exceed order at the, uh, aggregate amount of sixty-four thousand eight hundred dollars. Nearby approved, the monies to be appropriated from our ARPA allowance several years ago. Is there a second on this, Mr. Hamon?
I would like very much to second this.
How did I know you would want a second, Mr. Hamon? Um, uh, Madam Former Chair of the Planning Board, any thoughts before we vote?
No, since it's very well, uh, explained and, yeah, the ones that are hourly, as Julie already asked, we would keep an eye on that. And if there's any change, we would get another task order.
Exactly.
Right, yeah.
Adjustments, okay.
Aye.
Aye. Jacob?
Aye.
Four ayes. Julia?
Aye.
Five ayes.
I have a quick question about ARPA money.
Yes.
If the sun's setting on that soon?
By the end of the year.
That's right.
Has, has to be assigned, yeah. That's the urgency. Some folks asked what the urgency was, um, about doing, uh, between now and the end of the year. Going to appropriate ARPA monies towards this effort. Needs to be done this year. Okay, uh, very good. Uh, what do we have? Uh, Camp Rising Sun, next and last on the agenda. They're doing a, a run. And I'm happy to-
So they're doing a loop run on the road in front of their property.
It is. It's a loop run.
So it's not really closing the whole road?
It's not closing the road at all. Exactly. It's not closing the road. It's just we asked them to, um, do the permit. So we're aware of the, uh, activity and the event. We can advise folks in that neighborhood not to worry. If they see a bunch of folks, uh, running around the area that they're not used to.
Running in circles.
Um, running in circles. Uh, very good. Um, and, uh, we would be remiss if we didn't thank the folks at Camp Rising Sun for, um, their public-private partnership. As we mentioned earlier several months ago, um, the, uh, state has awarded some funds for a portion of the property for, of course, what? Drinking water protection along the Salt Hill. Um, we anticipate, uh, taking a look at that property and, um, having a passive trail there as well. So it's very exciting to think about having trails on, uh, the southeastern portion of town now. As of course, we know we have many on the west side, so.
Do we have to fill this part out yet tonight? Do we have this under item one?
Uh, item one, yes. So, uh, we have. Okay, there's the application, purpose of the event. Um, it's been indicated where it is, the applicant, uh, signature. Uh, we did not require, um, any kind of deposit or fee associated with this previously. Um, they, um, are asking to belong to cones, which, uh, for safety reasons seems like a, a smart decision.
I'm sure Teresa will accommodate to what she can.
Yes. I did last year. Alright. Very good. Provided there's no issue, uh, uh, from her office. Um, I'd like to go ahead and approve this application.
I thought I had asked about these though.
Sorry, which one?
Item one.
On the, on the resolution itself?
Yeah.
Um, block party, yes. And subject to additional insurance, yes. Um, no clean-up fee. We didn't charge a fee in the past. I wouldn't recommend.
So, so what? Insurance is, yes, but do we, do we do have a certain amount that we usually require them to have?
We do. We do. We ask for a million dollars when they're liable on the, yeah.
So that's one minute.
And I imagine Camp Rising Sun has it, given, given what they do.
Okay, and we're not gonna ask for a clean-up fee?
No.
Okay.
No, I don't think so. We would just ask them to make sure that there's no.
And others? There's nothing else that we have to?
No, I don't. Any other fees we would consider. I mean, we could ask for a deposit for the cones, but I feel pretty safe that Camp Rising Sun still would do it.
Well, I mean, other could be that we want them to have, you know, flag people out to direct traffic.
Yeah.
Local police.
You know, that kind of stuff. But yeah, they're gonna have police coverage or, you know.
You know, we didn't last time. Um, you know, uh, this is a very low-traffic area. Um, I think with the cones, you know, could be a, a good indication, some signage. I think we can require them to, maybe ask them to put out some signage for that. Would that work for you?
I think it's probably, you know, helpful.
Yeah. Alright, so let's do that. Let's add, um, signage to the other category on both ends, although it's circular. But we'll, say, oh, that's a little-
So it's signage in the event?
Right. Signage in the event's advising, lower it.
Right.
Okay.
Because basically they can't, that's when we know through traffic on the road while this is happening. Right? So if you come in from one end, you can't go all the way through the road because they're gonna be using that one section. So that's what we would want them to, that's what we want the signage to say.
No, I think it's, the signage would say one lane or something like that, right? Or limited.
Well, the application says they want to close the section of the-
Right.
Because it's circular, they're probably.
They seem to indicate that they were able to have cars coming and going last year.
Okay. Let's just say, well, see, I, I read that. So it says Oriole Mills ruled between three oh eight and one fifty, Oriole Mills Road to be partially blocked off with cones. So I thought that meant that partial section of the road is going to be fully blocked, essentially closed.
No, I think it's like creating like a bu, a fake bike lane or, or running like-
So you're saying it's just one lane? Okay.
Oh, not even a whole lane.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
That is resolution number twenty. Do you know that?
Yes.
Okay, approving a block party for charity run for Camp Rising Sun. Maybe block party is not the right term in this case. Um, eight AM and eleven AM. It'll be, uh, over before you know it. Um, the date is May nineteenth, twenty twenty-four. And I'd like to move resolution number twenty. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you Christine. Any further discussion? All in favor? Julia?
Aye.
Leo?
Hi.
Jacob? Um, we have some correspondence from, uh, Ann Conway with regard to, uh, very exciting topics. Why we got into this, uh?
Not very exciting, but this support stuff is important.
Yeah, you gotta be able to send an email.
So, right.
It's amazing. You have to spend on it.
Right. So, um-
The class is not, you know, I think it's-
Right.
Correct.
You know the world is changing when the post office is adopting new technology, right? And in this case, um, it's, uh, our machine with, um, penny bells. And so we've had our existing postage meter now for, what? Fourteen years, something like that, twelve years. Uh, so two options for upgrading. Uh, the machine, we need to do this, by the way. This is not a optional. Um, it's because of the postal system upgrade in June. So we can either buy a new machine and, uh, you take a little bit of annual maintenance, or we can lease the machine for five years. At a little over two thousand per year. With rental and annual maintenance included. Ten-year cost is higher with the lease, but then of course, the cost of capital lost, you would have to factor into it. What interest could you get off of your? Investment.
Thirty thousand dollars.
It, 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 it would appear that it still would be cheaper to own it.
I have one question though.
Okay.
The maintenance portion of that, it's a warranty, basic question. So we buy the machine. Is it like a bumper-to-bumper warranty?
Right, right.
And do you, is that coming, do you need to have the maintenance contract in order to have the warranty? Yeah, if you own it?
Yes. It seems like that that's necessary, right? Um-
I don't think you have to have a maintenance, if we recently went through this. I don't think you have to have a maintenance contract for the warranty.
So then how long is the wa, I guess I have a question.
For the warranty?
The warranty is our minimum.
We need to have a maintenance contract because we need to be able to call them up and say, we need you there right away.
But Bill's question is whether you have to have it because of the warranty.
Yeah, because I mean, if it's one of these ninety-day warranties and the thing, you know, craps out on day ninety-one and, you know, the maintenance-
Well, the warranty is the warranty.
Yeah.
And the maintenance is the maintenance.
Yeah, I, I'd like to get a little information about just how long that warranty is. I mean, most manufacturers of appliances, it's one year.
Yeah, I think that's what this is to the maintenance. It says after one year. Um, I would presume, but I may not be prepared to cut that. So we can ask about that?
It says there is a three hundred and sixty-five day warranty that is warranted of your solution.
Whereas if you lease something, when it breaks and it dies, they bring you, you know, in general.
Well, I mean, the one advantage of the leasing is after the five-year thing, if some new something has come along, they usually, you can upgrade the machine. If you bought the machine, you may have to buy a new machine. And then what do you do with that machine? But sometimes they give you some sort of discount, you know?
Yeah. I mean, given we had ours for twelve years, I mean, who knows what's twelve years from now and it'll all be AI virtual. Uh, there won't be things like Samson, post offices anymore, right Jacob?
Soon.
We'll stick to virtual post offices. It's more virtual, where you just have to think it, bring it along there. The new neu, neural link chips, yeah, exactly.
Right, um.
I mean, Ann was pretty clear in her recommendation, right, for purchasing. And I feel like she uses the machine regularly and probably I would trust her instincts.
Yeah.
I'm sure we, um,
You almost, I don't care passionately about this town.
No, I do. I just, I-
You care.
You just trust Ann.
Trust Ann. Um, and, and well, you should trust her. Um, there are two makes and models and the smaller one, uh, is something that she thinks is sufficient. We don't really need to go any faster than ninety-five letters per minute. Um, I dare say, what would happen if we got a jam? Uh, so you bet your one-year question answered.
Yeah, I mean, I probably hope that a company like Penny Bows-
Can you tell, can you tell he was in the federal government?
We don't-
How many meetings do we want on this one?
Well, I don't know. I dealt with Penny Bows when I was in the federal government. And they're, they're, they are a lot of company and they support their products. And I don't think, I don't think you'd get that much of the corporate runaround. Maybe in year four and a half, you know, if it died and it was really, you know, no longer functional.
Yeah.
But, you know, they, they do this service for many governments and they wouldn't, they did a bad job.
I don't even know the name of companies that have, that would be an alternative to it. And I think this is almost a monopoly. Certainly a two-off.
I would agree with Julia. You know, Ann has done her research.
Yeah.
She's recommending that we purchase.
I think I will sleep tonight if we go ahead and vote on this one. Alright, Bill?
Hi.
You go first.
I'll make the motion. I'll make the motion and we make the purchase.
Uh, the Centro C five hundred automatic mailing system, this smaller, um-
Sounds so high-tech. I'll finish.
The postal system.
Julia's second.
Okay.
Who, Bill moved to the second.
Julia's second.
Aye.
Jacob, you gonna stand or you gonna move?
Aye.
Okay. All in favor? Aye. Alright, thanks very much. Um, we had some correspondence. None of them look good. William? Well, let's do, let's do answer the question.
Yeah, she asked for the, uh, accounting software.
Accounting software there to-
Can I ask a clarifying question on this one because I was confused?
You, you can, and I'm hoping we don't vote on this one, by the way, because I think I'd like to, like, also get a better sense of timing.
Yeah, so on the meter one, it was clear that an upgrade is required.
Yeah.
And we had to choose between option A and option B.
Yes.
On this one, our existing company has been absorbed by a different, larger company.
Yeah.
But it wasn't clear to me whether an upgrade to our existing software is actually necessary.
It is.
It is. We can't keep our current option?
We can't. Well, I will tell you, it sort of operates like dial-up. So when she goes to hit the button to run payroll, now imagine we only have, depending upon the payroll, uh, that we're running, uh, somewhere. It's twenty-five or thirty checks. It takes about an hour and a half for that to run, okay? Um, when she wants to print something, she has to hit Control-T five or something like that. It's literally that, and that antiquated and not very efficient for times. So-
So it is required for functionality, but not necessarily because it's being mandated by the company. Like, we could keep our current, whatever it's called. BMSI, but it is inefficient.
I, I believe that to be the case.
And so then we have these two options.
We have those two options. Oracle being more expensive. And, you know, there obviously must be more options than just this, so, and I don't want Ann to have to, you know, scrounge all around. Because, you know, a lot of this takes getting acquainted and learning the systems and all.
Yeah, well, the thing is that, you know, at some point, they're probably, this new company is gonna stop supporting-
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah, that was the other thing, so, yeah.
You don't wanna have a lot of-
Three G phone.
Nothing to you.
Yeah, that's right.
Um.
So, but we, I mean, it's substantial though, because it's almost a doubling.
Yeah, yeah.
And it's an annual, right.
I'm frustrated by software, annual software charges these days, so, um, you know, I know a lot goes into it. It's a little bit like, uh, creating drugs, but you know, at some point, it just seems excessive to me for something that they can hit send and some of the lessons go.
The other, uh-
Why would they wanna do that?
The other option, or the other thing to think about is that, you should make a good point here that the BMSI bought the, or G, G-Works bought the BMSI. So the, um, upgrade would be more streamlined
Yeah.
if we do it now. So we can do this and then, you know, down the road, she can spend a little more time investigating to see if there are other options. Like she said, Oracle was too big for us.
Yeah.
And it probably would be easier to switch from a more updated platform.
Or learning it, yeah, yeah.
To a different, you know, if we wanted to do that, so.
Yeah. Uh, and I think she thinks, I asked her today, she thinks a good time would be in the fall to convert. So, you know, if we could decide maybe at our next meeting or soon thereafter on this one, that you can just issue yourself.
Well-
You ready to decide now?
Well, the only reason I'd say sooner rather than later is because the fall is our budget season. And we don't wanna be in a situation where, you know, we switch over to something new or the upgraded and then, you know, there's some issues.
Well, it may not be the only government that's gonna do that, so it'd be better, it might be better if we try to do it as soon as we can. So I can forget there's any issues.
Alright. Christine?
I'll make a motion.
Christine has called on, well, I also have the-
To move to work.
G-Works.
Okay, so a motion to approve the upgrade software, uh, accounting payroll software to G-Works as recommended by our wonderful bookkeeper Ann Conway. And who, you, you made that motion? You seconded it?
Yeah.
Julia?
Aye.
Jacob?
Aye.
Five ayes, happy. Okay.
We just maybe ask that we revisit this at one time and see how it's going and see if we wanna investigate other options.
Terrific, terrific. Okay, um.
So now we're at the not good.
We're, now we're at the, the correspondence not so great. Um, Bill, what did you do to cause this to happen?
It's all my fault.
Yeah.
Um.
You wanna for the folks at home?
Well, I, we received a phone call- Well, we received a phone call from Fulin, and I had a chat with her.
Wait, the folks at home don't know who Lin is?
Well, they have the.
Line front, no, okay.
The Dutchess County SPCA.
Okay.
And it appears, they've had, and in the, how many years I've been in this position as the liaison, they've always had a lot of turnover in their animal control officer position, it's a hard position to fill. They get, you know, it's, it's a difficult job to have as full-time, and so they're sort of phasing that out. And they're letting go of some of their ACOs, and I guess they're gonna be focusing their attention on some other things, and so they also were looking at different communities and the amount of dogs that they have to take in, you know, on an annual basis, and there really hasn't been a lot of activity here. We obviously get calls, and we have a monthly report, you know, different ant goats and whatever, whatever it is, but, you know, dogs are the primary issue and cats. And so our contract that we have has always had a sixty-day, either party can, and she was calling to say that, you know, based on where they're going as an organization, not just Red Hook, but Countywide, they were going to discontinue our contract in sixty days, and that we were gonna have to figure out a replacement for the, for an animal control officer, because it's required by state law.
So I'm, I'm perplexed, but, you know, maybe it doesn't take a lot to perplex me, because in, in the notice of reports, how little service we require from the town of Red Hook.
But we're still paying for it.
But we're still paying for it, and yet, it's too difficult to keep the staff, pay for the staff.
I think they, well, the ACOs are often, you know, maybe they're like a full-time police officer in Fishkill or some other town, and then they have a sort of part-time gig on the side working with the Dutch, because it is a law enforcement position. And I think they're just, either, either it's in that situation, or people would use it as a stepping stone into another full-time police position, you know, as a training opportunity, and so they just really have had a tough time. I mean, I just constantly, it might, contacts in my outlook for how many ACOs there are, there's a lot.
Right, but they're letting go of these people.
Yeah, now they're.
Right, it's, it's not that they didn't have people, they're just letting go.
They can't keep them, this is the problem.
Turnover.
It's, it's really an issue of retention.
Does the village also have to retain an animal control officer?
We did that for the whole.
We do it for the whole thing, okay.
We're gifted that way.
So what's.
So I can answer Christine's question. Some communities hire people to serve as, as a contractor essentially, to serve as an animal control officer.
Do you only pay for when the services are used?
Uh, yes, and those people often have relationships with the Dutchess County SPCA. The real issue for us, and I think we have to think about this, we don't, it doesn't happen very often, but say a dog bites somebody, and we don't know if the dog's been vaccinated. There's a quarantine period, they have to house the dog, and say, we don't even know who the dog belongs to. There's, that back-end part of it is the, is the hard part, and identifying a kennel in a place, and a vet, you know, vets have to, you know, if they bring in a stray. So there are people out there who do this service for other adjoining communities. And I think we're gonna have to look at finding somebody to serve as our ACO, but I also, in the past, the village police actually did this service a long time ago. You know, the, the taking, you know, getting over the animal is not the hardest part. It's what you do afterwards, getting to the vet, housing them, quarantining them, testing them, and so we're gonna have to figure out how we wanna do that. And there are some private kennels that also do that service on a sort of a contracted basis. So we're gonna have to research.
Nearby?
Yes.
Well, well, hang, hang on, gang, because, I mean, this is, you know, I predate you all, and I have to tell you, the very first phone call I received, I actually, technically, wasn't even the town supervisor at the time, it was two days before starting my first term. And it was from our dog control officer at the time, saying that we have a dangerous dog incident. Two Italian Mastiffs had run down the pastor's wife on Starbuck Road and proceeded to attack her to the point where they ate her like essentially. And you know, we, the, the, long story short, we spent a year and a half as the case was appealed. We had to house these dogs in, in a facility in Hyde Park. We had to, you know, take a look at our laws and see, you know, what we could charge. We end up spending a lot of money, taxpayer money, that we could not recover to, to house them, and, and the whole reason we went with Dutchess County SPCA is because of these dangerous dog situations, and there was a place that they could be put and would be included in our, and they would recover some of the costs from the owners and so on and so forth.
So it's one-stop shopping, I mean.
You know, the, the idea that we would go back to what we had before.
Well, but, I mean, there's no other options, but, I mean, do, does Columbia Greening Aid Society or Ulster SPCA provide these services? Because they're not that much further than Hyde Park is for us.
Yeah, that's a good question, where, where, where is Columbia, do you know?
I'm not sure.
It's just north of Hudson.
It's just.
It's like Stockport or something.
Okay.
Well, we can, we can research that, I don't know.
Let's look at that.
So they're about the same distance, really.
Well, I do think, I mean, I, I hear your point about the insurance policy essentially for a more extreme situation where you have a really extended stay. But I do, like, every year when we get the budget, I think, wow, that's not an insignificant cost for something that we use.
Ten thousand.
Not that much, you know, so maybe, maybe there are different business models where.
I mean.
I will also, I will also remind folks that that particular officer, animal control officer, had a ticket that was never submitted from a year prior for those very dogs. So when we're talking about, you know, cost savings, we might have, in fact, would have been made aware of the dogs being housed in insufficient, it was just temporary panels were put up on top of a lawn, essentially, with these dogs that were bred many years ago for fighting. So, you know, the costs associated, let's look at all of it, the cost of making a great mistake, not to mention what that individual had to go through because of the human error, so.
Well, and also, do some of those costs that we paid to Dutchess County SPCA, you know, fund other activities? Like, for example, there's twenty thousand feral cats in the county, and they have a program where they either capture, they try to use with a dart gun, they try to.
Trap them.
Trap them and neuter them or chemically, you know, like a birth control. And, you know, they do many other things in the county, and the housing facility that those two Mastiffs were, I think was at the Dutchess County SPCA, because that wasn't, that's in Hyde Park, that's where they are.
It wasn't, it was in Hyde Park, it was a private kennel.
It was a private kennel?
It was this, yeah.
Because it's before we had the agreement with Dutchess County.
Yes, because they do, I mean, they do contract work. The question is, do they have sufficient space, you know, they could be full from, because they do the whole county. Now, there's a kennel I'm aware of in Reinbeck that some of the contract ACOs use. I mean, I, I, I like your idea of contacting Ulster or Dutch, or Columbia. Yeah, I mean, I like that idea, because I think, you know, it's worth exploring.
Certainly seems like one of your stars, because that might be like.
So there, there're gonna be other communities that got this.
Got this letter.
Right, so I'd be curious to hear what our neighbors are doing as well.
Yeah, maybe Lynn could give you an idea of who they were contracting with. Maybe we can get together with some of them and try to figure out a.
I do know. I do know that Mylan and Reinbeck utilize a contracted ACO that's not the Dutchess County, it's not this organization, and it's somebody that we know. But, you know, I think we're just gonna have to, we're gonna have.
Well, we have, we, you know, I mean, June seems like a long time, but it's not really a long time.
It's gonna come and go.
We have three weekends between now and.
We'll need to have a contract and.
Yeah, we have to vote on it and agree.
Is there any sense of why they're doing this so quickly? I mean, I realize that they need to give us sixty days notice, but that's all they're doing, really.
Well, they're also letting go of, they're letting go of their ACOs effective June one.
Yeah, so they won't be able to provide the service anymore.
Yes.
No, I hear you, I just.
Well, clearly they're changing their.
I'm not happy with, I'm not happy that it's this way, because most SPCA's, you know, provide that law enforcement function, and, but just perhaps it just hasn't been working for them.
Okay, so, no?
Yes.
Old buddy or pal?
No, I will, I will contact.
You'll be taking a lead on this, I guess?
Well, I, I will reach out to, to Ulster and to Columbia and see what they do, and see if they do services for things outside their county. And if so, you know, and maybe they have an outside county rate that's a little different than, you know, in county.
It's good to get some quotes essentially for some of these more private contracts.
And they might, they might have some suggestions on other, other contractors.
I'm interested in recommendations as much as I am costs associated with it. If this done poorly, it could not be good.
Yeah, you know, there are private people who do it, and they're certified by the state or whatever, but you still end up with the situation of housing the animal. You know, this was a much, even though we didn't get used up, utilized a lot, if we had another situation like we have with the Mastiffs.
Right.
It, it, yeah, and, you know, you hope that doesn't happen.
Is there an option to sort of add a certification for all of our law enforcement masters?
That's a good question, because I said, the village did do this in the past, and.
Any more questions?
They actually housed them themselves up for up to like forty-eight hours, because those things always happen on a weekend or a holiday weekend. And then they would take the way it worked back in the days, and then they would break it, therefore, they would come and get it. But they kind of served as our. Yes. But I do find that a chat with our village police officers, because they always are the first responders anyway.
Okay, and we have to get these back to Ann, these cover sheets?
Yeah, you just signed, wrote that, signed your acknowledgements. Well, folks, Bill, we look forward to hearing from you, I think at our next meeting, Bill, if we're gonna be able to process, so whatever you can do.
Well, see what they're gonna find out.
We'd appreciate it, thanks very much. That concludes the agenda items for tonight, we wanna thank you all for attending, both in person and remotely. At this time, I'd like to make a motion that we go to executive session to discuss the matter under negotiation, the price of which could be materially impacted if it were made public. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, Julia?
Aye.
Jacob?
Aye.
Christine?
Aye.
What's up? Good night, thank you very much.
Okay.
Good night.